All right, good evening, everybody. Today is Thursday, the 24th of February. I think we have months over. First item on the agenda is approval of the meeting minutes from January 27, 2022.
I have a comment on the meeting minutes.
Okay.
If you look at the first page, it says Rob Dugan was not in attendance.
Yes.
If you look at the back page, I made a couple of motions.
Oh, you did?
I did.
Well, that's interesting.
I made the motion to adjourn, and I seconded a motion.
Okay, we're gonna have to not approve these minutes.
They're gonna table the minutes for corrections.
Yeah, we're gonna table the minutes for next week.
Unless somebody remembers who seconded that motion, we can correct it.
I think Mike made the motion I seconded, and it was me, Nancy, and Mike.
Okay, well, then there you go. You didn't remember that.
We had the other one, too.
Did I make another motion somewhere that I didn't see?
Yep, I think so. It's on page 2 out of 5 and 3 out of 5.
5 or 6? I have the wrong ones.
That one, yeah, and then we have this one.
You're in the wrong meeting minutes.
That's why I have it on here.
You have the wrong ones.
All right, so what?
So that was it.
Maybe send them back and have them corrected.
No, that was the only correction.
Oh, is it?
The wrong month.
Okay, so what would the corrections be?
There's something else in here.
It really doesn't matter the motion to adjourn, but on the...
The motion to adjourn, right? That's the one where you have your name on it?
Uh, for Ohio, I seconded the motion.
Yeah, so that was made by Mr. Farman, and seconded by me.
There you go.
All right, so there's your correction. So I'd like to make a... I'd like to make a motion, make a motion to approve the minutes from January...
27?
I can't, I wasn't even here.
You weren't even here to make this motion.
I can't make that motion.
I think we're gonna have to table this, have the correction made.
Have somebody make it with the correction.
Do you want to make it with the correction, Dan?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from January 27, 2022 with the corrections made.
Of?
Changing...
Mr. Dugan's name?
Highland View Reality Trust motion to close both parts of the hearing from Mr. Farman, from Mr. Dugan to Mr. Texera.
Okay.
And to change the meeting adjournment from Mr. Dugan to Mr. Farman.
Okay, do I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, I think I'm gonna go a little bit off the regular agenda this evening. We're gonna start with the RCJ Properties LLC. For, yeah, special permit under section 3231 of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw to allow storage of more than one unregistered vehicle on the property as shown on plans filed with the board. Said property is located at 2532 Main Street, Assessors Map 94, Lot 66, Zoned Commercial. And this was continued from last month of January 27. Hi.
Hello.
So I went by and checked it out.
I did also.
Dan?
I did also.
Okay.
I drive by there every day going to work, so.
Yeah, I do.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Yeah, it looks great over there.
I saw both before the repairs and after the garages were put in, and all of it looks great.
Thank you.
I do have a question, Dan. I noticed it was the red, what is it, half ton or half body in the back there? How long is it? Is that gonna be...
No, oh, no, that's leaving. That we had, so when I purchased the property, there was trash everywhere. And as I got rid of the trash, more trash kept coming into the property. So I had used several vehicles to block off from people being able to get back there, which at the time, we had spoken with the town lawyer about that. And so the town was aware that I had unregistered vehicles there that were just being used to fence off people dumping trash back there. I have various pictures of...
That won't be included in the numbers?
No, 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 that vehicle's gonna be leaving pretty soon, so.
That's good.
I had, if I may.
Yes, please.
Since then, just to give you all an idea, I actually staged some vehicles and I sent some pictures in. I don't know if you guys received them.
Yes, we did.
But that was just so that you guys would have more of an idea of what...
A visual.
Yeah, how many vehicles. I also spoke with Steve in regards to bylaws due to the fact that it's parking back there, storage, not... Any clients will be going back there. I didn't have to put a fire lane, however, I opted to do it anyways for the safety of everyone. And with that, we were able to fit 30 vehicles in the back, leaving a fire lane going straight down, as you can see on the pictures, and on the side of the building.
So did you receive the letter that Steve sent, Steve Sadwick? He did receive the email letter, okay. Yep, and that was the... That was sent on February 23rd, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I think a lot of the things on Steve's letter also was added on my application, a lot of that, so the stuff that I had agreed that I myself wanted to see out of my tenants moving in there to keep order, so.
And there are 10 items listed, you know, we've got the hours of operation on there. Everything is documented, and it's already been submitted.
Yes.
So it's all part of this hearing, all the documentation has been added, you all saw it, right?
Yes.
I think the only other thing we needed to agree on was really the amount of cars that should be parked back there that are unregistered.
Did you see the conditions that Steve had said we could impose?
Yes, they were all here.
Okay, okay, let's see the back ones.
Right, so we're imposing all of this that has been submitted to him. He's received the letter, confirmed that he received it. So again, the only addition to this is how many vehicles.
Do you think that we need to put a limit when we have that rule? An opaque gate will be installed from the northeast of the rear corner of the building to the east of the lot, so he's saying no unregistered vehicles be parked forward of that back garage?
Right, so you're aware nothing can be parked in front of it?
Yes, I'm gonna install a fence, and hopefully, once the ground isn't so cold and stuff, the fence will go up, and only vehicles will be parked behind that fence, so. I don't know if you guys can see this, I did submit that picture. That's a view of the vehicles that were parked from the street side. You can only see one lane, which is nine vehicles. The other 21 vehicles, they're not even seen because they're being blocked by the building itself. However, a fence right across would just be to...
Take that away from the area.
Number one, keep everyone...
Yeah.
And that way you can't see anything from the street.
Yeah, I mean, I will say you've done an amazing job cleaning up that whole area. It looks great compared to what it was. It looks amazing. So, Mike, Dan, we need to really just come up with a number, what we think is a fair number of cars.
Vehicles.
That's my... Where I'm kind of up in the air, I don't even think we need to put a number or restrict him to a number. As long as he follows these conditions, it's gonna keep him already under, you know, 40.
Right, did you read that one paragraph?
I didn't.
Okay. We still need to give a number.
Okay.
We want to leave no room for misinterpretation.
40 is my number.
Forty. It's a big number, Dan.
I'm willing to negotiate.
Yeah, no, that's...
It's an acre land, too. I would have to say, here's the thing, per my, as I stated, I left a fire lane along the side of the building, went right down. Right now, I can fit 30 cars right there. Six cars will be in the garage at any given point being worked on. So I would have said 36 is what I had looked at.
Well, parked in the back, not what was inside the building.
Correct.
Not what's waiting to go in, right? So in the back, parked in the back, unregistered. Unregistered, we're talking, in the back, parked.
If I may, is the turnover that much? Do you sell 40 cars a day out of there?
Well, here's the thing, not only so now with COVID, you're ordering parts, we're waiting for parts.
True.
That's one deal. Then, you know, you have a car that, for whatever reason, you have to diagnose it, can't diagnose it right now because your electrical guy isn't in, or whatever case, put that off to the side, and yes, you start turning vehicles around. Here's the thing I have to say, when I staged these vehicles, these were all brought in within one hour. Town didn't get any complaints, no one was notified. The only reason the town even knows about this is because I took pictures and sent them in. The vehicles were brought in with dealer plates, they weren't transported, you know, there was nothing on the street that imposed traffic, et cetera. We're not gonna be moving 30 vehicles in one hour. That's not ever gonna happen. There's no meat for that. We're gonna be moving cars, they're gonna be in the shop, they're gonna be worked on. A client says, hey, I'm actually interested in this vehicle. Well, that vehicle wasn't being worked on. Well, guess what, now it has to be rushed in because that's the vehicle that's gonna sell and bring in money, so it gives the flexibility of being able to do all of that, so.
You expect you have to do business, all right, fuck that.
Yep.
Forty, hundred?
I just, I'll explain myself a little bit better. I just think that if he follows these 10 conditions, he's only gonna be able to fit the cars that are in the back. Once he has the fence up, and he follows these conditions, that, to me, is fair.
And what kind of zone is this? Is this...
Commercial, not heavy. That's the other difference, and that's something you need to keep in mind, too.
But that's just for repairing vehicles, not for storing them unregistered.
Well, that's what, this is the special permit for that.
For?
Storing unregistered vehicles in a non-heavy industrial.
Oh, I thought I read it as primary-use motor vehicle repair is only allowed in the town's heavy industrial district.
Right, and now this is a special permit that we're allowing him to store those vehicles there?
If I may, in that, these are light vehicles, not heavy. Heavy would be like the trucks that are next door to me.
But it's not zoned as heavy industrial to have hypothetically that much, that many vehicles there originally, right? So that's why you're here.
That's why I'm here, correct.
What's your thought on the number?
Well, I would say it has an excess of 20, but...
I was thinking 30.
Yeah, that's 30.
You had 40, you had 20, I had 30. Be comfortable with 30?
30.
Can I make a point, even though I wasn't here?
Yes.
You just said 36 was the number you were looking for?
Well, 36 with the 6 inside the bed.
My point. How many cars you think you could fit behind the fence? Nose to tail, door to door?
So, I could fit another 10, 15 vehicles if I didn't have a fire lane.
15 or 50?
15.
15.
In addition, so I could fit 45 in there comfortably.
So you could do 45, including the ones inside?
In the, we're talking about the back of the fence, 45.
45. So you're saying 40, you're saying 30, he's saying 36. If you got 30 cars, what's 36 cars? If you get 36 cars, what's 40 cars?
Fair.
I wasn't here, so I don't really know.
I know, I'm just trying to also keep the neighbor's letter in mind when doing this as well.
I believe the neighbor who was here last week also sent a letter.
He just wanted to make sure we were fair on the number of cars as well.
At some point, he actually popped into my, one of his trucks broke down in my lot, actually, the day after we met here, there were dissequences.
He had very, nothing but nice things to say. He really did, I will tell you that. He's really a great guy, nice neighbor to have, I guess.
Indeed.
But we just gotta be fair with his request as well, with the number of vehicles, because that was his biggest concern, things being dropped off there outside.
And I think one of the things that Steve wrote is no...
Nothing?
Nothing will be transported and done actually on the street. Everything has to go in.
Right.
Which, having spoken with SENA, the cars that are gonna be brought from their lot over, it's gonna be driven.
Right, one at a time.
They'll slap a plate on, and that's it, so.
Right, and that was noted last week, last month. Last week, last month. All right, 35? I'm good with 35. 35?
Oh, it really was, wasn't it? Well, it kinda was, I guess.
35?
I did.
35.
Are we gonna, do we have to read out the conditions?
Yes. You could say the conditions put forth by the letter.
I'd like to make a motion to approve RCJ Properties LLC for a special permit under section 3231 of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw to allow storage of more than one unregistered vehicle on the property as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 2532 Main Street, Assessors Map 94, Lot 66, Zoned Commercial. And the following conditions will be imposed, sorry, we will be imposing the conditions set forth by Steve Sadwick on February 23rd, with an addition to the amount of vehicles stored on the back property to 35.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Congratulations.
35 it is.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for being patient with us.
It's been a great experience, I appreciate it.
Thank you. You, too. And again, nice job in cleaning up that area.
Yeah, it looks great.
Thank you.
Looks great.
Okay, next item on the agenda, George and Lisa...
Branger 40.
Branger 40, thank you, for a variance under section 4130, Appendix B of the zoning, Tewksbury zoning bylaw, for a side yard setback to construct a 14 by 24 sunroom and a 14 by 16 open deck as shown on plans filed with the board. Said property is located at 334 South Street, Assessors Map 95, Lot 157, Zoned Residential. Name and address, please?
Lisa Branger 40, 334 South Street, Tewksbury, Mass. 01876.
George Branger 40, 334 South Street, Tewksbury, Mass. 01876.
Thank you, can you...
I had to get rid of them, but it's not working, I'm just...
Dan, who are the voting members?
Joe, Nancy, and Rob.
Thank you. Can you tell me a little bit about what you're trying to do, please?
So what we would like to do is put a four-season room on the back of our living room, but what we really would like is an open deck. We are both outdoor people, we like being outdoors a lot, so we wanted an open deck, and that will step up into the four-season room. And so what we really would like to do is extend, there are stairs that go up from the side of our house to the kitchen, and we want to extend those, that little deck, to the open deck behind the house.
You miss it by a foot?
Yes.
Is it a foot or less than a foot?
In one area, it's a foot, in another area, it's nine inches.
It's the way that property angles.
It's the way the property goes.
The open deck is gonna miss it by a foot?
Yes.
Ground level, up a little bit?
It would be equal with the first level of my house, so I think it's... First floor, like six feet up or something, in the back of the house?
Yeah, it might be six or seven feet.
What's it sitting on, typical deck, gonna sit on four-by-fours?
Yes.
Not a poured foundation?
No.
No.
Sonata.
Sonata, typical deck.
Typical deck.
Questions, anybody?
How have your neighbors been? Is anyone...
So before we even, I'm a project manager, this is what I do for a living. Time management is everything. But before we even started this project, we went to our neighbors and we asked what their thoughts were. Because if my neighbor to the right, where that setback is not where it should be, had said, no, I wouldn't be for that, we wouldn't be here in front of you. Because I wanted their buy-in before we started, because I think that's the right thing to do.
My neighbor on that side, he has no problem with that.
And the neighbor on the other side is 550 feet back, so he said to me, quote, "I'm never gonna see it, so I don't care," end quote.
Never got a phone call this evening, so.
So that's where the setback is, it's on the right side of the right neighbor?
Yes.
And they had no problem with it?
No.
No, not at all.
Is that a shed right there in that same location?
That's gonna be moved.
That's a portable shed, it actually comes together by pieces, and that's being moved.
So really, the only thing in question is the set of stairs right there, right?
Correct.
That's the egress from the kitchen, they could put that in, either told, because it's an egress. We want to extend from that straight back.
Just back.
Easier to bring the food out to the open deck rather than going living room and sunroom, that way, so.
Anybody else have any questions? All right, this being a public hearing, I'll open it up to the public. You guys have anything else you want to discuss? No? All right, somebody want to make the motion?
I make a motion to close both parts of the hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, who wants to make the motion?
I make a motion to approve George and Lisa...
Branger 40.
Branger 40. For a variance under section 4130, Appendix B of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw for side yard setbacks to construct a 14 by 24-foot sunroom and a 14 by 16-foot open deck. As shown on plans filed with this board, said property is located at 334 South Street, Assessors Map 95, Lot 157, Zoned Residential.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Approved, good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Got to wait for the snow in the winter and the ground to get unfroze.
You know.
We'll get there. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for bringing us one of the nicest applications I've seen in a long time.
Paper, I've never seen yours.
I know, it's great, thank you.
As I said, I am a project manager.
Yeah, it shows, it shows.
I build very big, very large in front of me.
Good for you, that's great.
Do you want me to read the next one for you?
Yeah, sure.
Next item on the agenda.
I know he does.
3D builders for a variance under section 4130, Appendix B of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw for front yard setbacks and a special permit under section 3651 to convert the existing carport into a garage and add a 6-foot by 12-foot extension. As shown on plans filed with this board, said property is located at 215 Maple Street, Assessors Map 88, Lot 20, Zoned Residential. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address, please?
Deon Jesus, 215 Maple Street.
Okay, can you tell us a little bit about what you're doing, please?
So, like I said on the paper, these houses were built back in the 50s, and they just literally put like a 16 by 12 carport. And what I'd like to do is extend that carport out towards the front street, which I think I have a little over 30 feet there, 6 feet by 12 feet. Not many cars that fit in a 16 by 12 anymore.
Okay.
The back of the garage is, I think, 15 feet roughly, and the street and the house kind of go at an angle, so the front of the garage would actually be roughly about 20 feet.
You're on a corner lot, right?
Yeah, corner lot, so I have 25 feet on both sides. I was under the impression that the house was built before, is that Martha Rav was put there as well?
All right, who's voting on this one, Dan?
Mr. Farman, Mr. Dugan, and Mr. Carey.
Gentlemen, do you have questions?
Driveway in reference to this, is it comes straight off Maple, like straight into the carport?
Pretty much, it does.
Will that be closed in on the proposed garage, so it's a carport, is it open right now?
It's open right now, and I'd like to close it in.
All right.
Is the, is the carport in the house, what is it behind it?
It's actually, I guess, it's not really a mudroom, you kind of go in there, then the stairs, that's how they were built, the stairs kind of wrap around and go into the basement there.
So the roof of the carport would attach?
The roof of the carport is existing now. I'm looking just to come out with a gable 6 feet.
Right, but the existing carport is basically a garage in the house, just doesn't have...
Pretty much.
Doesn't have two walls?
Exactly.
Has a back wall and a side wall?
Side wall, yep.
When you extend it, is that gonna be the same width?
Yes, gonna stick with the 12 feet. I figured anything more would approach even more. So I just figured I'd run the 12 feet straight out, because it's 12 feet wide now, that carport.
Is it gonna be equal to the stairs that you have now on the front stairs? Is that all gonna be, is it gonna be further out?
It's probably a little further out. The stairs are, if I was to say, there's maybe three rises there, four-foot platform, 16, 24, yes, maybe five feet, might be a foot more.
I get it now. See him? So that's the measurement that you didn't put on your plot plan?
You have my surveyor, yeah.
The 16 feet is here.
15 feet's in the back, yeah. That was my thing when I got it back, and they're so busy, you cannot ruffle their feathers, or they push you back even more, which he should have definitely put, like with that arrow, proposed garage. He, I actually thought I drew on some of those, because I think it was almost 20 feet, because as you can see, the street goes one way and the house goes the other. So I'm roughly about 20 feet to that corner of the house now.
It does say the 15 here.
Right, but it...
You looking at the denial letter?
Approximately 16-foot setback from Martha. That would be from this section right here, the added section.
Right, right, right.
So it's 15 here, it's 16 here. And being a corner lot, it needs to be 25. So he's got it here. And you don't think Martha was there when they built that house?
Yeah, when I talked to, it was Kathy.
Which probably makes sense, because you got 15, one. So that pushed you into existing nonconforming status.
Exactly. Yeah, that eight foot five, that's pretty much like a split level ca, set of stairs and a little muddy area right there that goes into the basement.
So going into the basement, you can't really disturb that and push the garage back.
Exactly, yeah. That's, that's the, that's a whole set of stairs and a little platform there.
That's a whole nother can of worms for you.
That sure is.
Do you have anything on that Martha's side of the yard? Is there any fence, issue, anything?
Nothing at all.
So just be the side of the garage?
Exactly.
That foot, six foot extension coming off the front of the house, will that be a, a footing wall or?
Yeah, it'll be a foundation.
Foundation.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No, I don't have any questions right now.
All right, we'll open it up to the public. Okay. Want to make a motion?
Sure. I make a motion to accept 3D builders for the variance under section 4130.
Let's make a motion to close the hearing.
All right, sorry.
Parts of the hearing?
Make a motion to close this hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, to close this hearing, right, when you make this motion, it's two parts.
Okay.
Right, there's two different things we're going through.
Well, now it's closed, we can...
The special permit, right. If you look at what the building commission sent and what he was looking for, let's go with the special permit first and then the variance to approve. Okay?
Yep.
Thank you. So do you want to make a motion to approve those?
I make a motion to approve.
The 3D builders?
Yeah, can you read that ahead?
Yeah.
I make a motion to accept 3D builders for the variance under section 4130, Appendix B.
Uh, special, we're going to do the special permit under section 3651 first.
So I make a motion to accept a special permit under section 3651 to convert existing carport into a garage, adding six feet by 12 foot extension as shown on plans filed with the board. Said property located at 215 Maple Street, Assessors Map 88, Lot 20, Zoned Residential.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, next. 3D builder for...
For the variance?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. I make a motion to accept 3D builders for the variance under section 4130, Appendix B, Tewksbury zoning laws, bylaws for the front yard setback for a special permit.
Okay, we already did the special, so...
Yep, all right.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
I'd like to...
Fix that?
No, I'd like to add to it.
Okay.
Since the print that we have, because we say what plans shown filed with this board,
Uh-huh.
it does not show that 16 foot for the variance.
Okay.
And I would just like to say for the record that it's the corner of the six by 12 foot extension on the garage will be 16 feet from the propping line.
It's more.
16 feet from the propping line.
Okay. Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How long did you plow for before you finally gave it up? That was, I've been thinking that all night.
At least 10 years.
Oh, okay, I'm going on for you. It's about time.
Time to give it up.
Yeah. Take care, thank you.
Thank you.
So on that one, say again, let's just have a little discussion on that one.
Sure.
We can do it on the record, just for your information kind of thing. So you do that in two, two motions, because the special permit is saying that the, it determines that the proposed modifications will not substantially be more detrimental to the existing nonconforming structure.
Mm-hmm.
So if you do a variance and approve it, and then go back and do the special permit and say no, now you've given them a permit for nothing. You've given them a variance that they can't use. So we always do your special permits first, then your variances.
Okay.
Because if you deny the special permit, you're not going to give them a variance.
Okay.
FYI kind of stuff.
Sure, no need to know that, yep. So always leave with the special permit?
Always.
Leave with the special permit. And we see a lot of that 3651, existing nonconforming.
Yep.
We see a lot of that. Mark in your book.
Okay, any old business? No new business?
Motion adjourned?
No?
No.
Oh, I missed last one. I got stuff. So we've all, we've all got the letters from Attorney Plunkett?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
We might want to formally ask town council to, did you read the last one again?
Says we're not answering anything.
Says we're not, we're not answering anything.
And they're just going to...
So we need the, we do need the town council to...
Perhaps we have to formally ask town council to look into this.
Yes, because it is, we're getting them regularly.
I think if we just reach out to Steve, can, will Steve take care of it for us?
My question is, why does, doesn't he have to, Plunkett have to notify the town council when he's taken an action?
One would think. But by the letters that we're getting, I would like to formally ask town council to look into it.
Oh, I agree.
Thank you. I, I would...
I would point information.
I, too, would like to request town council to look at those.
If you look at the addresses...
It's just us.
No, town council's on it.
Town council's on there, but...
But it's all personal, it's all...
But, yeah, normally, in the past,
Yeah.
I've never gotten one that said we didn't do anything. So this might just be one that maybe slipped through the cracks somewhere. So we'll, we'll just bring it up.
Saying we didn't do anything, meaning...
The last one, the last letter we got...
Right, I know, I got that.
So I've never gotten a lot like that.
So if we don't respond, he can move ahead with whatever he was requesting?
Well, well, he's, he's taken a court action, so he, he's going to get what he wants. I mean, it's, is that...
If we don't respond...
If we don't respond.
Damage to us.
I don't think, not us personally.
I don't know, we're indemnified, or are we held, not liable? Unliable. I don't know.
We're going to find out.
Well...
Maybe, maybe, maybe we should request clarification from town council.
I was just saying, because I've been sued before, this indemnification is important.
I sue the law on this board.
I have to, by federal and local law.
On this board?
Yeah.
Great.
The way things are going nowadays, I don't, I don't get a chance.
The boards don't help liable for any of this stuff. Because they're coming here requesting a variance to go by break a law, to break a zoning bylaw. You know what I mean?
I know. All right, thank you.
That's all I have.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Yes, we'd like to request that. Town, look into that for us, please. Is there anything else that we need to bring up?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See you next meeting, March 31st.